Right, good morning. I think we have everything settled now and we're glad to have a full house here this morning as we conduct the business of the Department of Education. I would remind you please to make sure your cellphones are off, are on silent so that we don't get disturbed. This is, this board meeting of course is live streamed and we're always glad to have people to join us on the live stream. And so we, we will, and we want to make certain that we thank the Madison County School District for allowing us homeless people to have a place to light today. We will be here for the next three months, we know, and they've been very gracious to allow us to meet in their boardroom. Renovations at the department are coming along. However, I was informed this morning that last night, the new roof leaked. So it's going to be a while, I think. So if you are a regular attendee, you'll know we're going to be here until further notice. So we do thank you. We are excited this morning to have Dr. Robert Taylor with us, sitting to my left. Dr. Taylor is our State Superintendent of Education. He is three days on the job?
Three days.
Three days on the job. I don't think he's been able to sit down since he's been here. He has had a full schedule of meetings and dinners and speeches already. And we are just thrilled to have him here. He is a Mississippian, he, and you'll hear from him a little bit later on. But we just feel so fortunate that he was interested in coming to Mississippi from where he'd been working in North Carolina. He's coming home and we are glad to have him and you'll hear from him a little bit later on. We, we think that we have a bright future. Our concern is the vote from the board when we were interviewing was that we keep the trajectory we're on and move to even newer heights. And we feel like that Dr. Taylor is the right person to help us do that. And so we're excited about this. I have asked this morning Mr. Jacobs to lead our pledge and Mr. Miller will lead our invocation. And so we ask that you stand with us, please.
A pledge, ladies?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Lord, thank you for this day. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to meet. Please be with us and guide us with our decisions today and to keep in mind our ultimate purpose, to make sure that we are doing our best to better the lives of the children in the state of Mississippi. In your name we pray. Amen.
We do have one other new person at the table today. We have Jessica Robinson with us. Jessica is filling in today from the Attorney General's office. She will be here with, for, with us for a couple of months. And then we will have a permanent attorney with us to be with the board. So Jessica, we're glad you're here. We appreciate your being with us today. The agenda, we have, the first item for action is approval of the minutes from the December 15th, 2022 meeting. You have been given those. Do we have a motion?
No motion.
Okay. Do we, we have a second? Ms. Warner, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You have the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none. The consent agenda, are there any items on the consent agenda that you would like pulled out? If not, then we will adopt the agenda as presented. Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda, Mr. Jacobs? Do we have a second?
Sir.
Okay, Mr. Miller, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We don't have any recognitions this month, so we will move to the report from the superintendent. Dr. Benton will give us her report. This is Dr. Benton's final meeting with us as the interim superintendent. I'm going to let her give her report and then we'll move to the next thing.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. I would first like to give a very warm welcome to Dr. Taylor. Today, as Ms. Altman said, is my final board meeting as interim superintendent and I will continue to work with Dr. Taylor and the wonderful team at MDE through the end of the month to assist with the transition. Earlier this month, all legislators and elected officials received a hand-delivered copy of the 2122 superintendent's annual report on the first day of the session. And we were at the Capitol yesterday and people mentioned that annual report. So they enjoyed looking at that and seeing the great work that's taking place across the state. Our board members and other education partners also received a copy of the report via mail. Educators across Mississippi can be incredibly proud of that report because it tells the story of the progress Mississippi students and schools have made the past year. Dr. Taylor, Dr. Gavin, Holly Spivey and I attended the Senate Budget Committee hearing yesterday to present MDE's budget request for fiscal year 2024 and to share information about the previous year's return on investment. And they really liked the way we framed that presentation because it is indeed a return on investment. We had a lot of good things to share about our progress and to also lift up educational priorities in, going into the next session. The presentation was really well received. I think I based that on the good questions that followed. And then the request for our repeat performance, our presentation at, for the entire Senate Education Committee. So I thought that was a really fine indication of them liking what they heard and really seeing the return on investment. This month, we met the directors of Mississippi Six Regional Education Service Agencies. We also call those RESA's. We met with them to begin planning the professional development for 2023, 24. Now, the RESA's, we couldn't do this work without them. They help us implement our professional development sessions across the state. At Your Place Board Members, you'll find a blue folder and in that folder, the academic subcommittee may have seen that yesterday, Mr. East, but it's a summary of the quarter, the latest report, the quarter of professional development activities conducted across the state, whether face-to-face or live, as well as a summary of our coaching services that have taken place. That's on the left side. On the right side while I'm there, I'll just go ahead and lift out for you a brand-new publication that reflects cross-office work. I'll hold it up for the office, so you, audience, so you know what I'm talking about. But within every board goal, we've emphasized the word each and every and all. And what you have now is an infographic that reflects how that all comes together to make sure that we stay true to that North Star of providing those services, as well as a handout on the Dr. Burson's initiative on, and special education, Dr. Boykins on advancing inclusive leadership. But that's what's in your handout there. But all that to say, we could, again, we couldn't do this work without our RESA's and our directors scattered across the state. In March, we'll come forward, the department, with an item for your consideration to continue those services. Great news, MDE has been, received either directly or indirectly two grants since we last met. The first, we are a partner in the Federal Preschool Development Grant. The Department of Human Services, Services will count, serve as the host agent for that, but MDE is the primary partner to deliver training. And we will receive approximately $6 million annually to provide training for early childhood providers throughout the state. Child center, daycare centers, faith-based centers and other programs that currently don't have those services. So we're really excited to be a partner in that. And then SERP, which is the Strategic Education Research Partnership, that's a national organization. They just recently received a U.S. Department of Education grant to support middle school literacy. And we are thrilled that they picked Mississippi to be a partner state. So that's going to support 20 middle schools across the state and Dr. Smith and her team and Ms. Wells, they're working on that. Earlier this month, Alyssa Hobert, who is one of our literacy coaches, the two of us had the opportunity to, to attend the Region Seven Board Meeting in Florida. Now, the Region Seven Comprehensive Center is funded through the U.S. Department of Education, so they provide support to the state agency at no cost to us. And they are helping us with a lot of our major projects. You've seen those lifted out with our Parent Engagement Council, our Community Engagement Council. And this week, as we speak, as I speak right now, they are working with a group of English-language teachers across the state, drilling down and nailing down our proficiency standards. Tomorrow, they will be meeting with internal staff and just taking a temperature check and update on all of their projects as they support us with. But we are grateful to their external support. The Tupelo Kiwanis Club invited me to speak about the progress of education in Mississippi. And the members asked terrific questions about public education policy, legislation. They were really interested in dyslexia and the work that's taken place there from the department. Jean Cook facilitated this session and we were really fortunate that Dr. Washington Cole was able to join. That's in his area. And he was able to represent the Districts of Transformation. So that was a really good, good opportunity. I want to make the state board members aware that next week, the department will begin the ESEA Amendment Public Review Comment Time. We are proposing just minimal amendments to the state plan, the ESEA plan. And some of those things were COVID-related, for example. There are some cosmetic changes in our graphs and charts, just changing them so they're more legible. There are revisions related to EL proficiency standards that are required by federal statute. And then the state added ACT work keys. So it's things like that. But I didn't want you to see that going out for public comment and not being aware. Of course, Dr. Taylor, we've had those conversations in a meeting earlier this week. Next week, we will also be lifting out publicly, again, again, the importance of attendance through the release of our Chronic Absenteeism Report. Now, we delayed that for a couple of years because of COVID to try to let things settle a bit. But that information has been out. It's out on our public report card, our Mississippi report card, but this will be just easier for folks to really take action against. And chronic absenteeism, as you'll remember, is defined as when a student misses 10% or 18 days of a school year. That matters. That's a month's school. You see Dr. Barrett shaking her head. That's really important. Kids can't learn if they're not in school. So our rate has increased and I don't want anyone to be shocked when they see that. Pre-pandemic, it was 13%. Today, or last year, it was 28%. We are serious about making an impact. Our districts, our superintendents, like Mr. East, they're out working every day. And we know the relationships that are so important, that are built with teachers. And they are out pressing really hard, letting children know that when they miss school, they're missed. We miss you not being here for one thing, plus you're missing academics. But just to let you know that that report will come out, so when you see it, you won't be surprised. As I conclude my remarks today, I really want to take a minute to express my sincere appreciation to everyone at MDE for the tireless and seamless transition that has taken place over the past few months. I recently read a review of a book by Marcus Buckingham. Some of you may know him, but this is the name of the book. The book's title is going to grab your interest. Love Plus Work. Love Plus Work: How to Find What You Love, Love What You Do, and Then Do That for the Rest of Your Life. And in that book, he describes the day of work as a bit of a tapestry because you have thousands of interactions with people, conversations, maybe even conflicts, decisions to make, but all that comes together and what he describes, as I said, as a tapestry. But what he encourages the reader to do there is to find the red threads. Find the things that, even if you have to do them, you want to do them. You get excited about it before you even start doing that. Well, that's easy for me because for me, the red threads are the people and the MDE staff. From the moment that the department, Dr. Wright announced her retirement in April until today, MDE staff and leaders have not missed a beat, not a beat. Everybody remained focused on our goals, our priorities, our core initiatives, and we never let up for a moment. Despite a water crisis, despite office moves and alternate one, two, and three, we now have that. And I hear we're going to have some more now from what Ms. Altman shared. But the passion of the MDE team to improve educational outcomes in our states, state, is evident in the support they give every day, the quality of services they provide to educators across Mississippi. As a product of Mississippi Public Schools and a lifelong Mississippi educator, it has been my privilege, my honor, and truly a chore to serve as interim state superintendent. Now, my husband is on livestream and bless his heart, he's been on livestream for six months. So I just have to call out his name and thank Eric for his support across the miles in Hickory, Mississippi. My sweet mom and daddy, my children, and I'm so proud to have my son Matthew here, that one with that smile over there. I don't know where he gets that from. My grandchildren, I just appreciate them allowing me and to, to come to Jackson during the week and do this and the sacrifices that they made. And the board, I appreciate the confidence that you had in giving me this opportunity. So while the next chapter is just open, you know, that's the good thing about a book, a new book, it's open. It's in there what you decide to put in that book. I will remain engaged in public education in Mississippi and outside of Mississippi. I had the opportunity to do that prior to coming out of retirement this time and I will continue to be, I, I'd like to say your number-one champion, but at least in the top five, champion of your work. Because public education has improved tremendously over the last decade, thanks to the collective efforts of everyone in this room. For those not in the room, those on the front lines, our teachers, our support staff, our superintendents, our principals, our family, our legislative officials. It's everybody working together for the good of the children. And I am just very proud to have been part of this transformative work. So truly, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Benton. You know, an organization is only as good as the people who are in that organization. And I've already told Dr. Taylor, he is going to be able to work with a lot of rock stars. And Dr. Benton has, Dr. Benton, we talked about some time earlier, I believe you have been the Elvis of the rock stars to bring it down to Mississippi. You have been the head of the rock stars. And so there's no way to adequately thank Dr. Benton for what she's done. She has stepped up when we needed her on more than one occasion. When we needed a chief academic officer, she came out of retirement to do that job. And then when, when the superintendent retired, we needed a superintendent. And so she stepped up to do that. And so we will always be grateful for you. And I think, you know, we all want to think that our work has made a difference. And you can leave, you know, go proudly knowing that your work has made a difference in the, in the children of Mississippi. Well, you can't leave without a resolution. And so we're going to read the resolution for Dr. Benton now. And so we're going to read the resolution for Dr. Benton now. Whereas the Mississippi State Board of Education appointed Dr. Kim S. Benton as the State Superintendent of Education Interim in July '22. And whereas Dr. Benton has faithfully and effectively served in this role and in previous leadership roles for the Mississippi Department of Education for more than nine years, including six years as the Chief Academic Officer. And whereas MDE's Chief Academic Officer, Dr. Benton was in charge of implementing Hallmark initiatives, including the Early Childhood Collaborative Act, the Literacy-Based Promotion Act, and the Mississippi College and Career readiness standards, which led Mississippi students to achieve unprecedented outcomes, including becoming number one in the nation for the largest score gains on the National Assessment of Educational Progress, known as NAEP, exceeding the nation's graduation rate and improving the state's Quality Counts grade for K-12 achievement from an F to a C minus. And whereas Dr. Benton started her career in education as a teacher's assistant and served the Meridian Public School District for 27 years as a teacher, a principal, and an administrator. And whereas Dr. Benton has shared her expertise in advancing the field of education by serving as an Associate Professor in Educational Leadership at William Carey University, an adjunct instructor from Mississippi State University and the University of West Alabama, interim superintendent for the Mississippi Schools for the Deaf and Blind, and as a consultant and trainer for the Academic Development Institute, providing leadership services to multiple state education departments and regional comprehensive centers and the National Comprehensive Center. And whereas Dr. Benton earned her Associate of Arts Degree from Meridian Community College, her Bachelor of Science in Elementary Education, Master's in Elementary Education, Educational Specialist in Elementary Education, and Educational Leadership, and Doctorate in Curriculum and Instruction, all from Mississippi State University. And whereas Dr. Benton has been recognized as a National Distinguished Principal by the National Association of Elementary School Principals, Administrator of the Year by the Mississippi Association of Elementary Principals, Mississippi State University Alumni of the Year, Meridian Community College Alumni of the Year, and recipient of Mississippi Association of School Administrators Golden Lamp Award. Whereas Dr. Benton has been an active member and leader of numerous national and state boards and has earned multiple awards, including National Distinguished Principal from the National Association of Elementary School Principals, Administrator of the Year from the Mississippi Association of Elementary Principals, Mississippi State University Alumnus of the Year, Meridian Community College Alumnus of the Year, and the Mississippi Association of School Administrators Golden Lamp Award. And whereas Dr. Benton has garnered respect and admiration for her leadership from students, parents, teachers, administrators, legislative leaders, education advocates, staff, and leaders within the Mississippi Department of Education. Whereas Dr. Benton has dedicated her life to educating students and nurturing and supporting fellow and future educators, and has never hesitated to respond to the call of service to advance public education in Mississippi. Therefore, be it resolved that on this, the 19th day of January 2023, the Mississippi State Board of Education recognizes Dr. Kim S. Benton for her contributions to the advancement of public education in the state of Mississippi. I believe Dr. Benton is an overachiever. What do y'all think? But she has certainly had an impact on our state, and we're grateful for that. And the other thing that the board and I are grateful for is that she has been so gracious and so helpful in this transition. To be able to sit down with Dr. Taylor and walk him through all, I mean, all the things that are going on in the department, because there are so many moving parts to everything that goes on. And so we are grateful for that. We thank you. She'll be here to the end of the month. She's not going anywhere just yet. But this is her last board meeting. And we, you know, you noticed that Dr. Benton started out as an elementary teacher. Well, I don't want to throw shade on anybody, but let me tell you, if you can teach elementary school, you can do anything. And so I believe you have proven that. So we thank you for that. This last month, I have spent mostly in helping with transitions, making sure that we have everything lined up for our new superintendent. Holly Spivey, I don't know where Holly is. Holly has, yeah, Holly has spent a lot of time setting up meetings, and we thank her for that. With all the leadership in the state, the legislative committees that Dr. Taylor needs to meet. So she is just heading him in a direction every day, and we thank her for the work that she's done. So we feel like we're in a good spot. Like I said, Dr. Benton and all the staff at MDE has been very helpful in getting, helping him get acclimated. I'm going to let Dr. Taylor make some comments now, if you would like to.
All right. Thank you very much. Chair Altman, I'd like to cheer the members of the board. First of all, I want to thank you all for giving me the opportunity to come home and serve as the educational leader of Mississippi. I can't think of a more grateful thing to be, to have as a part of your educational and professional career. So I really thank you guys for that opportunity to mean the world to me. I can tell you that while I worked outside the state for 30 years, I've been a Mississippian for 55 years. So I guess I'm giving my age away. When the board makes a selection to have their state superintendent, that is one of the biggest tasks that you have. And so I don't take that lightly. I know how important that was for you. I'll let everyone know that my goal is to continue the work that the state has done. What I like most about Mississippi is the fact that we know and understand what success is and can be. That germ is here. And everyone that I've talked to, their goal is to continue that. Education is a vital part of what we do in terms of economic development and growth as a state. And I'm so very glad that this board and our former state superintendents have gotten our legislature to see that. And they've made tremendous investments. We want those investments to continue. And so I can't say much more about just being given the opportunity to lead that work. I do want to again thank Dr. Benton for the work that she's done. She's been so gracious in terms of working with me, talking with me, sharing items, working with the board and everybody else to make sure that this transition has been smooth. So, Dr. Benton, I do want to thank you for that. I do know that you've been at the forefront and instrumental in all the work that Mississippi has experienced in terms of growth in literacy and in the achievements that we've made. I can tell you that when I was outside the state, Mississippi was number one. I went around like, hey, it's Mississippi. You're going to recognize. So that really meant a lot to me as a native son. So I do want to thank you for all that work and what you've done for me. I also want to thank the MDE staff. This is a wonderful staff. When Chair Altman talked about the professionalism and the knowledge that they have, that is what a state department needs. Our goal is to serve districts and serve communities to make sure that we give them the resources that they need to provide better education for children. And that's evident in the work that they've done with literacy and early childhood education and other areas. And so it's, I think the greatest thing, Chair Altman, is to be able to come into an organization where you have that type of leadership. That really makes the work easy for the chief. And so I'm grateful for that, and I do look forward to working with them. I did share with the board in an email that I promoted Dr. Gavin as the Chief of Staff. I do want you guys to recognize that she's done a wonderful job in terms of stabilizing the financial structure. So we're still going to continue to have conversations about what her role will be in that. I know that no one wants to see that change again. And I'm sure that that's number one for Dr. Gavin as well. And so I look forward to working with you as the Chief of Staff. We'll certainly be updating the board on all of the things that we do as a unit. I'll end with sharing with the board that what I will do over the next week is share with you what I'll be doing for the next 100 days. I do know and understand how vitally important that first two or three months are when you're on a job. And so my goal is to make sure I make all the right connections in the legislature. Again, thank you, Holly, for making sure that those connections happen. But then it's about getting out in school districts and talking with principals, talking with superintendents, talking with teachers, to make sure I understand the issues that they face and what we can do as a department to make sure they have everything that they need to make students successful. I'll let you guys know that teaching is my heart. And Mrs. Altman had an opportunity to hear that from me last night when we were together. And no matter where I rise or how far I go, I always take my life back to being a classroom teacher. So we know our work has to be about the engagement that teachers have every day in classrooms. So as people outside the classroom, we can do all sorts of things to talk about what they should or should not be doing. But that's where the real work takes place. And so I've never forgotten that I am a product of the public schools of Mississippi. RH Watkins High School, LA Mississippi, go natives. You didn't know that, did you?
And I do my research.
Okay, okay. Classifiedified Locker 206, go check it out. And so anyway, so thank you for the opportunity to give words. And I do look forward to working with this board and working with everyone in the state of Mississippi to continue this great work.
Okay. Thank you. Michael, we'll segue right into Micah Hill's report.
Go Tornados.
Yes.
Go Tornados. All right. Good morning, everyone. First off, I want to welcome Dr. Taylor to our board. I can say that Charlie and I are looking forward to working with you, and we welcome you. Also, to Dr. Benton, thank you so much for your service and the time that you've committed to being our interim superintendent. Today, I'm going to be giving an update on the middle college program. I'll be discussing what the middle college program is, the schools in Mississippi that currently have the middle college as an option, and the benefits of middle college and how it's benefiting me. So the middle college program is an opportunity for juniors in high school to pursue their associate's degree and gain college credits from a community college in their area. For my school, we middle college students take our classes on the Jones College campus, and we will receive our associate's degree from that college our senior year of high school in May. Yay. So there are currently 10 schools in our state that have a middle college program so far. The schools are Casio's Go High School, Harrison County Collegiate Academy, George County Collegiate Academy, Petal High School Bridge Program, Hattiesburg High School, Gulfport School District, Laurel High School, Oxford High School, Tupelo Public School District, and Grenada School District. So I'm a part of the inaugural class of middle college students at my high school, along with eight other girls. And the new class of middle college students have joined us on campus this week as we started our second semester. And I can say with confidence that students who stick with this program not only benefit from the early college experience, but benefit from learning the importance of responsibility and staying on top of their college work. A big thing that the girls and I realized, being a part of this program, is that we would have to sacrifice some time that we would usually have, whether that's our high school junior year or our senior year, some extracurriculars, because, you know, ultimately, our degree comes first. And I'm looking forward to this new year and finishing strong with this program. I also wanted to talk about my experience with NASB Student Engagement Collaborative with Dr. Ryan McGee. He has my mentor. I felt welcome and comfortable from my first meeting to my last of last year. And I just want to take advantage of those connections with the other student representatives in other states. And this experience has taught me more about policymaking, the importance of connections. And I hope that the Student Engagement Collaborative, the next student representative, has the opportunity to be a part of it as well. I've learned so much. And the last bit of news is that I was accepted to Spelman College and Howard University last month. And I'm currently looking at my scholarship offers from both of these prestigious HBCUs. I'm proud to have these two schools as my options moving forward in my college process, and I'm looking forward to finishing the semester.
Good job. Well, wherever you choose, you will be successful. So we will keep up with you. But you all are going to need to recruit some guys to go in your middle college with you.
I know.
They're slacking a little bit, aren't they? But I'm glad that's been a good experience for you. I know you, at one point, said it was pretty stressful, but I...
It still is.
But it'll be worth it. Our other report is from Charlie Frugé, who is our junior representative. Charlie is in Washington and will, but will be back with us next month. So he's been doing his reports via video.
Board, Happy New Year to everyone, I'm sure. 2023 will be another great year for MDE and the board. And I'm excited to play a small role in that. I'd like to start today by extending a congratulations and welcome to Dr. Taylor. I can't wait to see what you have in store for Mississippi students, and I look forward to working with you. I'd also like to give a major shout-out and congratulations to my partner on the board, Micah Hill. She got into Howard and Spelman, and I'm very proud to call her a friend. So major congratulations for that, Micah. I'm very excited to say that this is my last virtual report. I'll be back in person with the board in February. For my last virtual report today, I want to talk about the importance of AP, Honors, and Dual Credit Courses in high school. AP, Honors, and Dual Credit Courses have been integral to my high school experience. They've allowed me to explore subjects beyond a surface-level understanding and to get college credit while doing it. I've received the best instruction my district has to offer by taking these classes, too. Taking these types of courses offer plenty of advantages. The first and the biggest is the GPA boost they offer. AP courses are scored on a 5.0 GPA scale rather than the traditional 4.0. Honors and Dual Credit Courses differ by district but are often scored on a 4.5 GPA scale. For example, if I make an A in a regular class, I'll get a 4.0. If I make the same grade in an AP course, I'll get a 5.0. This is huge for boosting GPA and gaining a higher class rank. Both the higher GPA and class rank helps a ton in college applications, too. Another advantage of AP courses is the possibility of earning college credit for a much lower price. If a student passes the AP exam at the end of the year, meaning they make a 3, 4, or 5 on the exam, they can earn college credit for the class. This, of course, differs on the college attended, but for the most part holds true. Students might pay $35 to register for the AP exam, or they might pay nothing at all, depending on the high school, and receive the value of $1,500 to $3,000 college course in credits. $35 to $3,000 is a huge difference. A final advantage and the biggest seller for me is the opportunity for our students to challenge themselves. In any given high school, the best, most inspiring teachers are the AP teachers. They're experienced. They're certified. They're the favorite. Every time I've taken an AP or Honors course, I've run into this. The teacher is always fantastic and inspiring. I've gone into classes thinking I hit a subject and come out of them wanting to dive further. Our students should have these type of opportunities. Everyone should get to dive into a subject beyond surface level at least once. I do want to add one disclaimer to this, though. By no means do I think all of our energy should be focused on our top achievers. We should focus our energy on our lowest-rated school districts. We should focus on literacy rates in passing basic-level math courses. We should work toward the F-rated school districts to Ds and the D-rated school districts to Cs. All of these goals are vital to our public school system. However, we shouldn't close the achievement gap in Mississippi by pushing the top downwards. We shouldn't close the achievement gap in Mississippi by pushing the top downwards. We should continue to improve our lowest-rated districts, but we should also motivate our highest-achieving students to take more difficult courses. Every student needs to be challenged, regardless of ability. I thank you all for listening, and I can't wait to be back in person for February's meeting. Thank you.
I don't know if you and Charlie talked or not, but...
They did not.
Your topics, one fed off the other, so that's great. Thank you very much. We have had two subcommittee meetings this week. The first one is the Academic Achievement, Free-K, Early Childhood, and Ms. Reese.
Yes, ma'am. Our crew is doing an outstanding job. They have two larger reports they're going to give, so I'm not going to steal that thunder. But I think you'll hear from them today about our math coaches, which they have been working diligently on to get out into our schools, and also our professional development and what we're doing for teachers across the board through the State Department of Education. So you'll hear some longer reports on those later.
Okay. Thank you. And then Dr. McGee, school performance and accountability?
Yes, Mr. Jacob, and I had a very intensive update from school accountability performance of a subcommittee meeting. Very informative on the direction that we're going. You always have to look back, see where you've been, how you corrected, how you look forward for the achievements our young people have.
Okay. Thank you. The next four items are informational items. The first one being the Educated Workforce Development Update. Dr. Vanderford?
Good morning. The first informational item we have for you this morning is an educator workforce update. I don't want to get ahead of Dr. Van Cleve, who is going to provide the presentation for us, but we are excited to announce that we did have 100% participation on our teacher shortage survey. It's pretty difficult to get that 100% participation, especially when you get down to that last 10 districts that you have to call a half a dozen times or so to get those results in, but we do appreciate all the districts for those submissions. So the presentation will include those survey results. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Dr. Van Cleve, and she will discuss our state ride strategies in response to those survey results.
Just a little bit closer. Am I good on the mic?
Yeah.
Excellent. Hello, good morning again, and thank you for the opportunity to share today's information item as an update on Mississippi's educator workforce. As always, we'll begin with our vision and mission, along with this item's alignment to our strategic plan goals. As you know, it is our vision to create a world-class educational system that gives students the knowledge and skills to be successful in college and the workforce and to flourish as parents and citizens. Within that is our mission to provide leadership through the development of policy and accountability systems so that all students are prepared to compete in the global community. Within that vision and mission, we see a strong educator workforce as critical to achieving goal four. Every school has effective teachers and leaders, even as we believe it lays the firm foundation for achieving many of the positive student outcomes that we look to see, such as those listed in goals one, two, three, and six. So before we dig into today's item, I wanted to take us back a little bit to give a sense of how we are continuing to take in the feedback from Mississippi stakeholders across our educator career continuum. So with that, you heard directly from teachers in October about efforts to recruit, hire, support, empower, and retain educators through the results of MDE's teacher retention survey. Then in December, you heard from universities on their performance in preparing and admitting Mississippi's next generation of educators. Today, you'll hear directly from district leaders on where we stand in terms of Mississippi's educator workforce landscape, both with a real recognition of the shortages we face and some exciting results from board-approved strategies that continue to place Mississippi on the cutting edge of educator workforce development. So with that, we'll go ahead and dig into the results of our 2022-2023 educator shortage survey. For brief context, the Office of Teaching and Leading launched the educator shortage survey on August 18, 2022. It then closed on November 14, 2022. As Dr. Vanderford noted, and with much help on her end as well, we did achieve 100% of Mississippi's traditional public school districts reporting on the survey. It then collected teacher, administrator, and school support staff vacancies. So together with that 100% completion rate and the comprehensive nature of the survey design, this has yet again filled in one of the clearest pictures of Mississippi's educator workforce landscape that we have had to date. So with that being said, we'll go ahead and start digging into these results. We first wanted to provide some clarification on the classifications that we use in reporting these results. So these are the results as completed by superintendents and/or their designees in terms of their vacancies for this current school year. So breaking these figures down a bit, what you'll see here in terms of teacher vacancies, you'll see that total of 2,593 vacancies for this current school year. Within that total, elementary vacancies continue to be our highest, and yet, what you'll also notice, the neat thing with this year's survey, we used the exact same questions as last year's survey for comparability. That was a request of our board members last year. So what you'll now see down at the bottom of that column is that we had a reduction in vacancies since approximately this time last year of about 443. Then moving into K-12 licensed educator vacancies and administrator vacancies, we'll dig into these a bit more, but what you'll similarly see is that while these are smaller numbers as compared to teacher vacancies, they are also declining as well since about this time last year. Now, on the other hand, when we look at K-12 support staff vacancies, those numbers have remained both fairly large and consistent over time, which is concerning for reasons that we'll dig into momentarily. For all of you, though, at a high level, we do indeed still have shortages, and we are seeing declines in the number of anticipated vacancies, so we'll also dig into a few theories as to why. Moving into our classifications, we'll start with elementary teachers here. You can see that K-3 and 4-6 vacancies make up the bulk of those. The way these tables are going to be organized, in the first column, you'll see the 21-22 vacancies. In the next column, you'll see 22-23, then followed by the differences year over year as reported by superintendents and their designees. So here, you'll see the declines in K-3 and 4-6. On the other hand, though, we are seeing an uptick in pre-kindergarten vacancies with an uptick of 14. That is denoted by that slightly purplish tint and will be the same on the next slides. Moving fairly quickly through those, where in middle school, our greatest area of need is math at 123. What you'll see in middle school, though, is there are declines in vacancies across the board there. Now, as compared to high school vacancies, with high school vacancies, we saw a fairly consistent pattern of upticks in the number of STEM vacancies, what we call science, technology, engineering, and math. There are some fairly consistent upticks there. The only exceptions there being biology at a reduction of 17, and you can see also on this next slide, algebra also had reduced vacancies. However, that's also slightly countered by geometry that did have an uptick of 7.5. Moving then into K-12 teacher vacancies, our big area of need there remains special education at 335. That also, though, did witness a decrease year over year that is fairly similar in terms of scale as to what we saw with K-3 and 4-6 vacancies. So then, looking from content area and sort of grade span vacancies to regional shortages, what you'll then see, this slide gives the totals for our Mississippi congressional districts. And you'll see there, again, most of the congressional districts did see large and/or slight declines in terms of vacancies, with the one exception there being congressional district one. Here, again, most of our districts actually did continue to witness shortages as a whole. Then shifting gears from teachers, so far, we've been talking about teachers. Now, moving into K-12 licensed educator vacancies, here, the thread that I'll continue to pull on is this piece around counselors. Those vacancies have remained fairly consistent over time, something we want to watch there, given the degree of elevated student mental health concerns we've heard as a result of the pandemic. Also, during Dr. Burson's report in December, we heard about the reduced rate of counselor candidates going through preparation as well. So that's something we certainly want to keep an eye on moving forward. Administrator vacancies by comparison have remained fairly small and are continuing to decline, which saves our big concern for last, which is the number of teacher assistant and bus driver vacancies statewide. Those are our highest overall totals, and they have had the greatest rate of increase year over year. So seeing that, we've got a couple of concerns. One, from a pipeline perspective, we know that frequently, our teachers assistants are some of our strongest candidates for future teachers, as many of you all have had that experience as well. And then with bus drivers, on a personal level, we know that many of our students rely on bus drivers to get to school, to go to games, to even get home at the end of the day. So seeing that pattern, we followed up with some of our districts that had the greatest rate of increase in terms of vacancies, and we heard the consistent feedback that current responsibilities may not be matching current wages, and especially in light of some of the strategies that have been employed to accelerate learning as a result of the pandemic, things like one-on-one tutorials with a teacher assistant or extended-day bus routes. Saturday bus routes are leaving them in a place the feedback we heard is just feeling fairly overwhelmed. So that is something we're going to want to continue to dig at. We also know that our Office of Safe and Orderly Schools is also continuing to follow up and gather feedback around issues surrounding bus drivers. But the one thing that I did want to leave with a note of encouragement is that several of our current educator workforce strategies are indeed meeting a piece of feedback that we continue to hear, which is the need for professional advancement. And within that, we have been pleased to see that the Mississippi teacher residency has continued to offer a pathway for professional advancement for our teacher assistants and actually even some bus drivers as well. So we'll continue on that strategy. You've heard previously about the mentoring and induction toolkit, and we momentarily will have an update on MECA with Dr. Murphy. So I'll close this out with one of the final challenges that we've heard in terms of our educator workforce is, for teachers, bus drivers, and educators more broadly, is a barrier for professional advancement around licensure tests. And so we're going to close out with some of the initial findings on two different studies on the impact of the licensure testing suspension and the performance-based licensure pilot. So just for a brief context, when we talk about the licensure testing criterion, it's typically what we think of, but not exclusively, things like the Praxis Core, Praxis Subject Area Assessments. Those came on board predominantly with No Child Left Behind's Highly Qualified Teacher Requirements in 2001. But then, Every Student Succeeds Act actually removed the highly qualified teacher requirement. So as a result of that change in landscape, MDE took the bold move to then initiate the performance-based licensure pilot, which is a nationally unprecedented study of performance-based alternatives for those educators who are positively impacting student outcomes and yet have struggled to pass the required licensure test. So we initiated that in 2018. As you all know, then in 2020, the State Board of Education approved the suspension of the licensure testing criterion due to COVID-19. We also wanted to study that impact. So as a result, MDE partnered with the New Teacher Project, otherwise known as TNTP, Teach Plus Mississippi, and Harvard University to study the impact of both the suspension and the pilot. We were predominantly interested in two questions here. With TNTP and Teach Plus, we wanted to know more about how did the licensure testing criterion suspension impact Mississippi educator licensure? We also wanted to know with Harvard University, how do students of PBL candidates perform as compared to similar teachers? So with that, we'll move into the initial findings of that study. The first one around the licensure testing criterion suspension, what was found is that the number of people granted initial five-year teaching licenses rose sharply during the licensure testing criterion suspension, from 1,774 in 2019 to 3,516 in 2022. Now, also, as was noted previously with our educator preparation annual report, we also saw increased rates of educator preparation entry and completion during this period. So now, when we layer on this picture with educated shortage survey results, what you now see is what is outlined here. Wherein, using 2021 reported vacancies, there could have been fewer newly licensed teachers as compared to vacancies in 2020. In 2022, there are now 923 more newly licensed teachers as compared to vacancies. Here, there are some big caveats. One, we don't want to make the assumption that everybody who has an initial license is actually teaching, or that they're teaching in some of the areas of need that we just discussed. The other piece here I want to highlight, that 3,036 over 2020, that's not a real number. We started the survey the following school year, but we did include it as a proxy to illustrate how that licensure-to-vacancy curve may have actually been inverted during the licensure testing suspension. So with that being said, in either case, the study findings did indicate that the testing suspension had an impact on Mississippi educator workforce quantity. What that then begs is a question of educator workforce quality that the PBL pilot study then aims to address. So within that, for those of you who joined the board after we initiated the PBL pilot study, some of the key selection criteria is listed here. We also wanted to look at relevant comparison groups. And so we first looked at, our first comparison group is those individuals who have passed all required licensure tests. But then we talked to superintendents and district coordinators, who said, actually, that's not the right comparison group. The right comparison group are other non-renewable licensed teachers who we would have likely been able to hire if not for the PBL pilot study. So we included that comparison group as well, and we looked across two different outcomes, student achievement on state tests, and student attendance for the years noted here. Within that, what we found was that, at the end of the day, the students assigned to PBL teachers performed about the same as students assigned to comparable teachers across all years and comparison groups. And so here, just to interpret a bit, a positive value means that PBL teachers have higher-scoring students than their comparison counterparts. Now, even when the value is slightly less than positive, here, we want to note that these effect sizes are all very small. They are not statistically different from zero. So yet again, what that means is PBL candidates are performing as well as similar teachers, not going through the traditional licensure testing requirements. So I want to be clear here that this is indeed a cutting-edge finding on a nationally unprecedented study in and of itself. And yet, if you're kind of like me and you're trained to look for statistical significance or you're looking for something that just really rings home as a positive student outcome, circling back to some of Dr. Benton's comments on absenteeism, we also looked at the rates of absenteeism. And here, the study found several marginally significant negative effects that suggest that students of PBL teachers have somewhat fewer absences than students of comparable teachers. Here, actually, the negative values are good. They imply that students are absent fewer days, which means they're in school more days. And that negative 1.1 figure is particularly telling, because when we look at national rates of absenteeism for the past two years, that represents almost a 10% decline in student absenteeism in the presence of one of our PBL candidates. So here, when we ask, again, we follow up with the districts and we talk to them a bit about this finding, and honestly, our superintendents, our principals, they weren't surprised. They said our PBL candidates are deeply rooted in their communities, they have strong relationships with families and guardians, and they're going to go the extra mile for their students. If their kids aren't in school, they're going to text, they're going to call, they're going to go to their houses even to figure out why that is. So with that being said, the key findings in summary are, on the first study, educator licensure increased during the licensure testing criterion suspension. On our second study, student attendance increased with PBL candidates. Together, these indicate that the benefits of the licensure testing criterion may be offset in terms of reductions for educator workforce candidates and student attendance. In other words, innovative strategies such as the performance-based licensure pilot have the potential to impact Mississippi's educator workforce quantity and quality. So with that, it leads to our opportunity, which is to continue the policy and/or programmatic efforts to expand access to PBL candidates via local district requests. And so with that, I always want to make sure to take the opportunity to thank the wonderful members of the Division of Talent Acquisition and Effectiveness, our teammates, because this work would not be possible without them, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Board, any questions or comments on this topic? Mr. Reese, you got...
Great job. Thank you.
Yeah, I started to say, this is interesting information and also, I think, significant information as you move forward with this program. And, you know, it's staggering to see how many shortages we have in different districts across the state. And it was also interesting to me to see that map as to where the shortages are and where there are less shortages, I guess I should say. So...
I agree. I think that's the neat opportunity for us to, just over time, to continue to look at where shortages are geographically, where they are in terms of content area, because we, you know, are seeing that there's movement in some areas, there's less movement in others. So it's certainly an opportunity for us to continue to look at moving forward.
Okay. Thank you very much. Dr. Vanderford, you have the next one, which is the educator career continuum.
Yes, and Dr. Murphy will be joining me at the table this morning for this exciting update on the launch of our MECA system. As the board knows, or as you're aware, we've had conversations over the last two or three years about improving our processes within the office of teaching and leading, particularly the Division of Educator License, for the issuance of educator licenses as well as the new. So with our extra dollars, we have been able to have now a license call center that's certainly a bit more responsive to the field as they have questions and needs from that office. And now, this has been, it's exciting to review this strategy that we've discussed for some time with the launch of MECA to replace our Arcade Killers system.
Thank you, Dr. Vanderford.
Thank you, Dr. Vanderford. Good morning, Chair Altman, members of the board, Dr. Ben, Dr. Taylor, State Superintendent Taylor. Thank you for the opportunity to share briefly an update regarding the progress that we've actually made on the Mississippi Educator Career Continuum Archive System, as we refer to as the MECA system. Just for a point of context, as you may recall, in March of 2022, by way of your approval, we were able to procure a contract with Randta Solutions, a Nashville-based company, to develop the MECA system that will consist of four portals that I'll share briefly about three of those, but one we'll actually hone in on. And our kickoff meeting actually was in April of 2022. We moved full speed ahead to achieve our goal of launching the first of four portals in January of 2023. And so just a little bit about the three portals that I won't be sharing information about today. Portal two will be our Professional Growth System Observation and Development Platform. This will allow those local school districts that don't already have access to software or a platform for conducting observations of teachers and administrators on an electronic device, the tool to actually do that. And that's something that the agency will provide to them in this particular portal. This particular portal will provide the option for those observers to assign MDE-PGS-aligned professional learning opportunities to the candidate for, you know, them actually engaging in targeted professional learning to target those areas that have been identified as areas for growth during the observation process. Aside from that, any educator will be able to actually enter into this portal and engage in professional learning, on-demand professional learning for the purpose of licensure renewal. Portal three will be our Talent Portal. That's one that I know Dr. McGee is particularly interested in, and will make certain that you're at the table when we start to develop that particular portal. That portal is one that would allow local districts to actually post positions, and application process would be a part of that particular system. Not only that, we'll be able to track vacancies, but also pinpoint geographic, through geographic mapping integration, what you actually saw on the screen today with the different congressional districts to actually identify those shortages. Portal four is our Accreditation Portal. This is one that will aid our colleagues in the Office of Accreditation, give them the ability to actually conduct a, I guess, virtual audit for the most part, of those accreditation standards that don't require a physical presence in the local school district. And so just now, a little bit more about Portal one, which we refer to as the Educator Preparation, Educator Licensure, and Educator Misconduct Evaluations Portal. This particular portal will allow educator preparation providers to continue to recommend candidates for licensure. But what we are particularly excited about is that they'd be able to proactively, in this system, we'd be able to collect data that is required by law for their annual reporting. You heard the report that Dr. Burson presented to you last month. That massive document that you probably received was done manually. And so that moves that manual process to one that is proactively collected during the application process and produced and analyzed and all that good stuff right in the system. Not only that, we have also automated the processing of the issuance of initial licenses for candidates who actually matriculate our traditional pathways at Mississippi-approved institutions. And what that means is that, once the candidate is recommended by the institution for licensure, and they've submitted all of the required documents for licensure, at the moment that they actually apply for the license, the license will be issued automatic without MDE employees touching that particular application. And so that eliminates the usual four- to six-week turnaround time that it usually takes to actually process an application.
And let me say right there, I applaud you for that.
You beat me to the punch.
And I also know that Superintendents and Districts will really applaud you for that turnaround. Congratulations on that. Thanks for that work.
Thank you, sir.
I second that statement.
Yes, sir. So it not only includes the automation of the issuance of teaching licenses, but those for initial license for administrators, but also our supplemental service providers such as counselors and psychometrists and others. We also have automated the processing of the issuance of the licenses that are requested by local school districts, that initial license for a teacher that's teaching out of field, and also the one-year reinstatement. So when your license expires, you apply for reinstatement, it automatically issue that particular license as well. And supplemental endorsements that are added by practice subject assessments will be auto-issued, along with one that is another biggie, is the renewal of a license. And so, once a candidate actually engages in professional development, they'll upload their documentation, whether that be a certificate or a transcript, and our staff daily will be going in and approving and providing feedback to those that didn't submit the right thing for the most part. But once it's approved, they've accrued the required amount of credits or continuing education units or coursework credit hours, they'll receive a notification automatically from the system stating that you can now, you know, apply for licensure renewal. And so eliminating, again, that four- to six turnaround time that it would take to process that request. Other features include a built-in checklist that actually walks candidates through each application type that they're applying for licensure. Any form that's required, it's found right there in the section that they are in. They don't have to leave the system to access those forms. They have the ability to actually start, save, and come back to complete an application. So you won't lose your work, and that's before you submit it. So once you've submitted it, you don't have that option. And again, they'll receive notifications, reminders of their license expiring and so on and so forth that the system will automatically generate for them. We've also included an Educator Misconduct Evaluation section, which will allow local school districts to actually start or initiate the reporting of alleged misconduct. We'll be able to communicate within that portal as well with the local school district and track cases and so on and so forth. Other common features that we're excited about, one being not having to remember passwords, in that you can actually utilize your social account, your Facebook, your Google, or Amazon username and password, you'd be able to log in with that. And so we're happy to say that we successfully launched Portal one of the MECA system on this past Monday, actually, at 5:03 Central Standard Time. And it's live now. And since Tuesday, we've had 3,000 successful log-ons and unique users. In 2022, we had about 47,000 unique users, but since Tuesday, we've had actually 3,000 unique users of the new system. We've gotten lots of positive feedback, but with anything, you know, there are little glitches, so to speak, but we have sprints that we run weekly for the most part to address any issues that may arise. But the technology is running smoothly from a technical standpoint. And so we've conducted relevant training, just to share that with you. We started actually communicating back in July, when Dr. Benton took the helm, about the transition to the new system, and started to engage with stakeholders testing the system in October 2022. And we've conducted training last week and this week, offered two trainings to local school district personnel that'll be utilizing the system, offered specific training for educator preparation providers and general users as well this week. And so with that, just trying to see here, we'll just, we'll go to the video that I have for you that'll actually give you a look at what the system and some of the features candidates are experiencing now.
It is always the goal of the Mississippi Department of Education to afford professional educators the ability to maximize every available moment with students by limiting the time spent on tasks not related to instructional delivery. One strategy employed by the MDE to accomplish this goal is the recent investment to streamline its state-level processes, reducing the amount of paperwork for educator licensure. Introducing the Mississippi Educator Career Continuum Archive System, known as MECA. A state-of-the-art cloud-based system dedicated to supporting teachers from recruitment to retirement, MECA will be more than an educator licensure application approval system. MECA consists of four portals for licensure, professional growth, educator talent, and accreditation. These portals will provide an integrated approach to supporting a Mississippi educator's entire career lifecycle. On January 17th, the Mississippi Department of Education will launch Portal one, Educator Preparation, Licensure, and Misconduct Evaluations. MECA eliminates the need to remember complicated passwords with single sign-on functionality connected to an educator's commonly-used personal applications. Continuing education units are tracked and processed as they are earned by uploading documentation to the assigned educator licensure management account. This allows the renewal of the license to be automatically issued at the point of submission. Built-in checklists and forms streamline the licensure process for all educators. This includes the automatic issuance of licenses for educators completing a traditional educator preparation pathway and limits MDE staff involvement, eliminating the usual four-to-six weeks processing time. The MECA educator licensure portal is only the beginning. Every Mississippi student deserves access to a high-performing educator. Coming by the end of 2023, Mississippi educators will enjoy the ability to use MECA for organizing, maintaining, and enhancing their professional growth. In addition, the Educator Talent Portal, coming in 2024, will connect teacher candidates directly to opportunities for employment. By leveraging advanced data modeling, MECA will reduce the time it takes to put the right teacher with the right student and maximize every learning moment.
That concludes my update, but I want to thank the OTSS team with, for assisting us throughout, and the members of our Teaching and Leading Team that were part of the development of this first portal. And don't want to name names in that I'll miss somebody, but I'd say John Hartley and his leadership, Serita Donaldson, and Tamika Lipsy. And thank you so much, Mr. Cremon, and also couldn't do it without you, Dr. Vanderford, and everybody else that helped to procure, make this happen for us for the most part. So we'll bring other updates in the future on the other portals. Thank you.
Do you have a timeline for your other portals?
Yes, ma'am. And so the Professional Growth System Portal, which is portal number two, is projected to launch in December of 2023. And the other two portals, the Accreditation Portal, the Talent Portal, June of 2024.
Good, good.
And Chair, I would like to say that I kind of held off on saying something about Courtney until Cory was finished, because together, they've done some great things. MTR, moving teachers into the classroom, the battle that about six years ago, you were running around chasing your trail, trying to figure out, now we're there. This is great work for local school districts, and Dr. McGee has already said it, but the ease by which we have moved to is stellar, and it's going to help us a great deal with teachers and accreditation. So thank both of you for the work you're doing to take care of our teachers.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you for your effort.
Thank you.
You have eliminated a lot of angst out in the districts, for sure, and phone calls that we received a lot of times about licensure particularly. So we appreciate your efforts, and I think this has moved us light-years ahead to be able to provide a service for people who, making it as easy as it can be to, for them to be able to move forward in their careers and help eliminate some of the issues we talked about earlier. So thank you for your work. Anybody else have any comments?
Chair, I'll just add, for people in the audience that are not familiar with the teacher licensure issue, this is an issue in every single state that I can think of. The process and the headaches that you have to go through to secure your license, and to know that we have a system like this. When I talked with Dr. Murphy, he shared with me, I said, this is phenomenal. You're talking about first, this definitely will be emulated around the country. So this is great work, absolutely.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay. One more with Dr. Vanderford. This is the 23 graduation rates for state and district and school levels.
As you know, we report annually on the graduation rate, as well as our dropout rates that have been calculated utilizing the four-year adjusted cohort method. So the report that Mr. Beer will share with you today is for students that entered the ninth grade for the first time during the 1819 school year, and were seniors of the 2021-2022 school year, and the cohort window closed, and they would have received their diploma and graduated by July 31st of 2022.
Good morning, board members. Dr. Taylor, nice to meet you. Alan Burrow, Executive Director of District School Performance.
So...
You haven't met Alan, because he's always back there calculating, adding and subtracting.
Yeah, so graduation dropout rates kind of start off our accountability cycle each year. So this is the first bit of data that we'll use. We've talked a bit about the vision and mission this morning. This touches on our board strategy number two, and that's all, every student graduates from high school and is ready for college and career. So we calculate graduation rates in accordance with Mississippi Code and federal definition for graduation rates. We use the federally-defined four-year adjusted cohort graduation rate. And this is for students entering the ninth grade for the first time in the 1819 school year. And then these, as Dr. Vanderford mentioned, these rates will be included in accountability this coming year. So we use four different statuses for completion status for these students in the cohort. That is a graduate, which is a traditional graduate, a received a traditional high school diploma. A completer is a student that receives a GED issued by the local school district or a certificate of completion. A student that's still enrolled is a student who did not complete at the end of year four but is still enrolled in month one of the fifth year. And then, we have students that transfer in or out of the cohort during that four-year window. That's the adjusted cohort piece. Any other students are considered dropout? Just as a note, we did have disruptions during the pandemic that resulted in waivers for certain graduation requirements around end-of-course assessments, and we're going to still see some impacts to our graduation rates because of those waivers until those students in those cohorts move out. So here is the big release. The graduation rate for this year continues to increase. It has gone up a little bit from last year, and we're still above the national average, the latest national average of 86.5% graduation rate. However, Mississippi's dropout rate has a slight tick up from last year. We went from 8.5 dropout rate to a 9 even this year. And we'll, I'll talk a little bit about the data that we looked at around that. Let me first cover the state-level subgroup information. So this slide just shows all the different subgroups that we report on. The N-count is the denominator in that graduation rate calculation, and then we've got graduation rates and dropout rates reported here. Again, graduation rate and dropout rate are reported, but we also have those completion and still-enrolled status. And all of this data is going to be in your board backup in that long report that you have. So in looking at that dropout rate that ticked up slightly this year, we wanted to see if there was a specific subgroup that was impacted in that. So this slide shows graduation rates and dropout rates by subgroup with some shading, red, bad, green, good. So you'll see dropout rates ticked up slightly among most subgroups, so it's not a particular subgroup that we're seeing that impact in. And then our graduation rates went up slightly in most subgroups, with some of our smaller subgroups showing slight decline. So those, we didn't see a specific subgroup that was impacted. Because I talked about completion rates and still-enrolled rates, I wanted to show you the trend on those. So this is several, five years of rates on those different completion statuses. And you'll note that completion rate and still-enrolled rate has dropped from last year. note that completion rate and still-enrolled rate has dropped from last year, leading to that slight increase in dropout rate. So if our graduation rate goes up, our dropout rate goes up. We got to see a reduction in one of those other statuses. So we're seeing it in both completion rate and still-enrolled rate. So we also report on the graduation rate and dropout rate for students with disabilities. We continue to see an improvement in graduation rates for students with disabilities, quite a significant increase this year from 59.9 to 67.1, so that is good. These slides show a count of distribution of graduation rates among districts. So we have 55 districts with a graduation rate equal to or greater than 90%, 77 that were between 80 and 89.9%, 10 that were between 70 and 79.9%, none in that 60 percentile, 60 to 69.9% category, and then two below 60%. Let me also note at this point that when we report graduation dropout rates, we report them for all entities that actually graduate students. So those could be special schools as well. So you'll see those in there. District-level summary for dropout rates, same logic here. We've got counts for dropout rates for districts among the different dropout rates. And then we're going to just show some slides of our highest graduation rates and lowest graduation rates, same for dropout. So Mississippi School for Arts and Mississippi School for Math and Science had complete 100% graduation rates. And then we've listed down our top 10 with the exclusion of any districts that have recently consolidated because that would impact their graduation rates because they're being split out between the prior existing districts. And then our lowest dropout rates. And then our lowest graduation rates. Oakley Youth Development Center is one of those special schools that I mentioned that And then our highest dropout rates. Okay, again, all of those tables and charts are in your board backup material. This has been posted on the MDE website under the reporting website under accountability. So this report that the board member has is now available to the public as well.
Any questions of Mr. Burrow? I think it'd be interesting, which you've probably already done this, to see the correlation between, particularly since we mentioned absenteeism and the fact that our absenteeism rates have increased. So the correlation between dropout rates and schools that have high absenteeism and their graduation rate, because, I mean, absenteeism is going to impact that for sure. Am I right about that?
I think that would be a good guess, but yeah, we can look at that data.
Well, that's what it is, a guess. So, yeah. But, I mean, if you're not coming to school, you're not getting the... But that would be an interesting thing to see. One more tool in the toolbox to be able to work with these districts that are experiencing that. Any other questions or comments about this? Thank you very much. We appreciate the information. Item four is an overview of the mathematics professional development coaching services.
Greetings, President Altman, Dr. Taylor, Dr. Benton, and members of the board. I'm Marla Davis, one of the Associate State Superintendents in the Office of Academic Education. And it's definitely my personal and professional pleasure to bring before you this informational item around a contract that you all will be seeing later on in the agenda as it relates to math professional development and instructional coaching services. It is our hope for your consideration for the approval of state-appropriated funds to provide coaching services for the next four years with one of our, with the selected vendor. As we do with all presentations at the State Board, we want to make sure that we ensure that all of our initiatives align with our vision and mission at the State Department to ensure that we have an educational class system that gives students the knowledge and skills that they need to be successful in college and also in the workforce. As we move into the, excuse me, I'm not sure why I'm nervous. I'm normally not. As we move into our scope of work, deliverables in our timeline, you will see how each one of these efforts will align with each of the strategic goals that we have here, specifically goals one, two, four, and six. As we look at what our deployment of math coaches will offer, not only our students and our teachers, you'll also see how we're making sure that we provide supports to some of our non-selected schools, but also for our educator prep programs, which hone specifically into goal number four, ensuring that we have effective schools and effective leaders and teachers within those schools. I'd like to bring you all back to where we were approximately a year ago today. As you all remember, last year, we brought before you a contract to have a pilot year for providing math coaching services across the state. We brought forth at that time a contract in that pilot year to provide coaching services for 30 schools with the implementation of 15 coaches across the state. We then transitioned into the summer of 2022 where we wanted to see if there was an appetite for us duplicating our services with what we've done with our digital literacy coaches, our literacy coaches, our ESIP coaches, and other coaching models that we have across the state. And so what we did in the summer of '22 is we released an RFA, which is a request for applications, to see if our districts would allow some of their highly-qualified educators to participate in a coaching model for math services. Through that particular process, we did identify that, of course, there was a teacher shortage, and many of our districts were not able at that particular point in time to release teachers to perform in these full-level capacity of coaching services. And so on the heels of that, we immediately turned around and released an RFP in the fall of 2022 to, again, look for a vendor that would be able to provide the coaches that we need to provide math coaching supports across the state. And as you're fully aware, the RFP process is somewhere between a three- to six-month time process from the advertisement, the open window for solicitation, the reviewing process, getting to the intent to award, and then where we are today. And so what we're bringing forward today, again, later on in the agenda, is for a four-year contract with Catapult Learning. That four-year contract will begin immediately upon your approval with a fifth-year renewal optional upon the successful completion of services. One of the things that I'd like to bring to your attention, of course, is that these are state-appropriated funds, and this will allow us to deploy services to our schools and districts that are in the most need of those supports. This particular graphic was shared with you previously today by our colleague, Dr. Courtney Van Cleve. And what it shows to you is specifically our teacher vacancies across the state in congressional districts one, two, three, and four. One of the things that you're going to notice is that in congressional districts two and three, this is where we have the highest teacher vacancies. And so it was very important for us, keeping in mind that if we're going to deploy coaches, that we do not contribute to the teacher vacancies that exist across the state. And so it's very important that we were able to find a vendor that was able to not only recruit coaches, but recruit high-quality coaches to put them in our most needed areas. These numbers, again, do not depict all of the math vacancies, but it does indicate that there are teacher vacancies that if indeed we did pull classroom teachers out, we would also be attributing to that particular shortage. And as we transition into where we're desiring to place these coaches, you will see that we will be deploying coaches in congressional districts two and three immediately because that is where we see that the need is most prevalent. The vendor that you will see in the contract that will come before you later throughout the agenda is with Catapult Learning. One of the things I'd like to share with you all about Catapult Learning is that this particular entity has been doing this level of work for approximately 50 years. They've not only done work across the entire country, they've done it on an international level. They've also had supports in our DODIA schools. And if you're familiar with the DODIA schools, those are the Department of Defense schools. They were the only schools that actually saw magnificent gains in NATE across the years. Catapult Learning was very instrumental in those gains, in which they implemented the College and Career Readiness Standards and a literacy initiative across those particular schools. It's important for us to also note that their work, Catapult, being it national and being it across the world, they've worked with the New York City Department of Public Education, they've worked with Florida, and they've worked with multiple states across the country. As it relates to the type of work that we're requesting from this particular vendor, I'd like to spend a little time talking to you all about their recruitment process. So of course, they've engaged their national partners to ensure that they had the opportunity to spread the word about the type of work that they wanted to do in the state of Mississippi. Because of their extensive network, they were able to also pull in previous referrals and also applicants and additional contractors across the country that they've worked with. They utilize traditional social media outlets such as LinkedIn and Indeed, and then also because of their national outreach, they've been able to post the positions upon your approval for this particular contract on their individual webpage. Once they've done that, of course, they bring in those applications and they review them at a very strategic level. They bring in those for phone interviews, and then they also bring in, at a third level, those particular candidates they feel that they want to meet in person. Upon an in-person meeting, they then transition into what they consider to be a performance task presentation. That's something that's very important because it's, what's on paper does not always translate into what the person is able to do. And so the performance task is something that we do here at the State Department for all of our content areas, so we were very excited to hear that this was a process that was part of their recruitment. And so the performance task allows them to not only see the interpersonal skills of the coaches, but it also gives a really good indication as to if math content expertise lies with that particular coach. So a few things that were very important for us as the State Department to see as it relates to the coaching efforts is what type of coach are we going to be placing in our Mississippi classrooms and in our Mississippi districts? And so each of the coaches that are going to be brought onboard have five or more years of classroom instruction, either in K-8 education or 9-12 mathematics. If you remember the information that was shared by Courtney, Algebra I was one of those areas where we wanted to make sure that we have math coaches to provide supports. It's also important that our coaches have at least one year or more of instructional coaching experience. That's very important for us because our coaches will be working hand-in-hand, knee-to-knee with classroom teachers. Secondarily, each of the coaches must have led impactful professional development and coaching services, and they had to have done that either in a virtual setting or in an in-person setting. The reason that that particular caveat was important for us as a state is we can't put COVID back in the box. Virtual learning is here for at least for the time being. And so we need coaches that have done this work on a virtual level and also they're able to do it in person. Thirdly, they have to have experience building relationships with diverse groups of stakeholders. And what do we mean by that? That means they have to be able to work with parents, students, teachers, administrators, curriculum coordinators, and as we speak a little bit more down in the presentation, they have to be able to work with pre-service teachers as well. We also put additional language in the RFP and a requirement on the vendor to make sure that they have a cohort of coaches that have worked with novice teachers. And when we say novice teachers, we need to make sure that these coaches have the expertise to work with those teachers that are coming straight out of our university prep programs. And then secondarily, because as you're fully aware, we have some students that need additional supports that may have special needs, those students that are in inclusion classrooms. And so it's very important that our math coaches have expertise working with students in those particular environments. And then lastly, because, of course, we're fully aware of the fact that, because we're not pulling classroom teachers out for this particular capacity, that the vendor is aware of the fact that the coaches that they deploy for this initiative have to be able to travel within the state and to the state. And so what that means is if they're going to recruit teachers that are from Alabama, or they're going to recruit teachers that are from Georgia or any neighboring state, it's the understanding that that coach has to be able to travel within the state and to the state on a weekly basis, and that was a non-negotiable. I can speak to, last year, when we had our initial pilot work, we did have coaches that were from the state of Mississippi, some that were not. We had one coach that I believe was from Brooklyn, New York, and he was here on a weekly basis, working hand-to-hand, knee-to-knee in those classrooms. Again, this was a non-negotiable for a vendor that was vying for this particular contract. So at this particular time, I'll turn it over to Dr. Tanette Smith, who's our Executive Director for the Office of Elementary Education in Reading.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Good morning, Ms. Altman, Dr. Taylor, State Board. It's a pleasure for me to be in front of you today to talk a little bit about our onboarding and our scope of work that will be provided from our current contract. The Office of Elementary Education in Reading is very excited to expand their current coaching services to include this math coaching and professional development initiative. The MDE Math Coach Initiative will provide direct coach services in mathematics for grades three through 12. Our math coaches will provide job-embedded, classroom-focused professional learning, both in-person and virtually. These professional learning opportunities will be aligned to the Mississippi College and Career Readiness Standards for Mathematics, and they will support the classroom implementation of locally-adapted, high-quality instructional material. Math coaches will provide supports that are differentiated based on the needs of teachers and the identified schools. The cyclical coaching services will consist of a need-based assessment, classroom observations and walkthroughs, individualized plans of action, co-teaching, modeling, and lesson planning, as well as monthly reporting and monitoring by our MDE program office. The new math initiative will utilize our proven Mississippi coaching model, which was developed and refined as we have progressed through the years in our literacy coaching efforts. This model has been used to guide our other, all of our other coaching services, including our early childhood coaches, our partnership with Amplify Data coaches, our digital learning coaches, our state systemic improvement plan coaches, as well as our school improvement coaches. Our MDE literacy coaches developed a coaching onboarding session that we will use to ensure that our newest members of our collaborative team understand the coaching continuum as well as the six components that are pivotal to coaching success. These components include comprehensive, ongoing coach training, which we have found is imperative to ensuring that coaches are equipped with the necessary tools to build adult learning. Goal-setting, which is used to identify two to three areas that should act as a starting point for the coaching journey. These goals are fluid and should be revised. Effective communication at each level of interaction is imperative as well. Parents, teachers, students, administrators, community, and beyond are necessary partners in this work. Reporting accountability focuses on the analysis of multiple data points to help triangulate the services that will yield the most outcomes for our targeted audiences. Educative development, where the coach utilizes the coaching continuum to determine the types of professional learning opportunities to provide. And lastly, collaboration and effective partnership, which focuses on developing that teacher-coach partnership as well as encouraging families and engaging with families as educational partners and other partnerships within our MDE office, including supporting other program offices such as Special Education, our Office of Student Assessment, and our Office of Secondary Education. On June 30, January 31, we will continue our onboarding since we know that we'll have some staff from the Catapult team that will be joining us as national coaches, and they aren't from Mississippi. So we will provide, as a part of our onboarding process, a session to review our MDE-developed resources. You know, we have a plethora of resources that we've developed and released for guiding and supporting teachers, and so we felt it was imperative that we provide a common language for all of us, for them to use as they coach and supported teachers. The key resources that we will... The key resources that we will review include the Mississippi College and Readiness Standards for Mathematics, the professional, I'm sorry, the mathematics instructional observation protocol for grades three through 12, which is aligned to the Professional Growth System rubric, and the Instructional Planning Guide for Math. In addition, it's always important to ensure that the coaches recognize that all students and all teachers should be supported as they work to develop their coaching action plans. With that being said, the Mississippi Access for All Guide 2.0, and the Mississippi Family Guide for Student Success, and of course, the Mississippi Academic Assessment Program MAP Blueprints are essential tools that will be unpacked by our staff during this onboarding process.
And so, as you all have heard from Dr. Smith, how we're looking forward to onboarding, training, and also professionally developing our math coaches, we thought it was imperative for you all to understand where the deployments will go first. So, what we're going to employ is going to be considered a phase in, where we will deploy coaches over the next few months. The immediate needs are going to be in Congressional Districts II and III, so we will be immediately deploying coaches into seven schools across two districts. We will then transition over the next few months to adding on the additional four districts, and then we'll be adding on an additional seven districts. Again, this contract is for year-round services. It will not just be for during the school year. There are requirements within the RFP and also that are on the table with this particular contract for them to provide services 12 months throughout the year, for the next four years with a fifth year of renewal. Because, of course, we have a very limited staff at the MDE that works with mathematics, we wanted to make sure that we were able to maximize the support that these particular coaches will be offering. And so, number one, the coaches will be providing supports with the administrators at each of the schools that have been identified for receiving supports. Those supports will be inclusive of using the MIOP, which is the Math Instructional Observational Protocol tool that Dr. Smith alluded to. They'll be also supporting those administrators at each of the building with understanding their MAP assessment data for math in grades three through 12. Secondarily, I know Dr. Burson and her team will be very excited about this particular piece. We've also ensured that this vendor will also provide supports for educator prep programs. And so, during the summer, they will be spending time with our EPPs, training those teachers that may be eventually entering into the math classroom. We're also making sure that there's going to be grade-band-appropriate training in the forms of technology and also for working with manipulatives. We thought that this was very important for our coaches to be able to provide, because many of our students need, have the need for learning in a conceptual manner. And so, the coaches have to have that pedagogy with them when they are being deployed to ensure that our students and our teachers that need manipulatives in their hands to further advance the work are able to do so. As it relates to technology, they're going to have to be able to work with the decimals. They have to be able to work with the TI-83 or 84+, as we prepare for the Algebra I state assessment. And then, of course, while we're going to be deploying coaches across the state to specific schools, we wanted to make sure that even those schools that won't have the benefit of a coach still are able to have the exposure or the accessibility to them. And so, what does that mean? That means that we're going to be, the MDE is often invited to participate in regional and also statewide conferences. And so, if at any particular point in time, there's a need for the MDE to provide math-specific coaching or math-specific PD, we're asking that these coaches be number one to put their name on the list to provide professional development services. And so, even if you don't have a coach that's assigned to your school, you're able to be in front of them at one of these professional learning opportunities. And then, of course, lastly, as Dr. Smith alluded to, we are a resource development machine at the MDE. And so, over the next four years with your approval of this contract, our math coaches will also be a content lens for us to use as well, as we develop additional math resources at the agency. Again, these are year-round services that will not only support those schools that have math coaches, but it'll also support all of the state as well. At this particular point in time, we'll open it up to any questions that you all may have for Dr. Smith or myself.
Dr. McGee?
So, tell me about, who are they employed by? Catapult?
They will be employed by Catapult, that is correct.
And their home base will be wherever they live, or bringing them to the department?
They will have workstations strategically throughout the state, and their workstation will actually be at that particular district.
But they're not employees of the district?
They're not employees of the district, no, sir.
And somebody in the district would have to have supervisory capacity over this employee?
No, so...
Or this contractor, should I say?
So, no, the actual coaches are actual employees of the vendor themselves. And the vendor, which was also part of the RFP process, which is part of the contract, is they must put in place a program manager. We put some strict guidelines in place as it relates to the qualifications that this particular manager must have in order to oversee and help coordinate these efforts.
But your program manager is going to be in the school district?
That program manager is actually, again, an employee of the vendor, but she is within the state, yes, sir.
I think I get where you're going, yeah. The evaluation of the coach will be, we built it within the RFA, a 360-degree evaluation methodology. And so, the administrator at the school will have to evaluate the coaches' services that they are providing, the teacher, as well as the program manager, as well as the MDE program offices. As far as the school district managing, the school district will welcome the coach in, hopefully, just as they would welcome in any external vendor. So, they would not necessarily be managing or supervising, just as we do with our literacy coaches. The school district does not manage or supervise the literacy coach. The literacy coach goes in as a support, as a helping hand to the teacher, and it's non-evaluative in its entirety.
And the selection process for assignment of these coaches to districts, I would assume that the district would apply for a coach, and then you receive the...
So, it's a hybrid model of sorts. So, one of the things that we looked at was longitudinal data across MAP performance for the last previous three administrations. So, that was number one. The second thing that we looked at was some of those districts that have a higher percentage of new or novice classroom teachers. And then, thirdly, we will be bringing on some of the, excuse me, some of the schools that had previous coaches in there as well. And so, as we continue to progress throughout this, we will add additional schools where administrators can, of course, ask for a coach to be placed in their district.
In your comments, you also brought up if an individual from Alabama comes over to people, or wherever, okay? So, does this individual applying his leadership have to be certified by us in the state or not certified?
Well, it would be, they would have to meet the guidelines as developed by Catapult, but we would have to onboard them, and they would have to be very familiar with our Mississippi College and Career Readiness Standards, as well as our practices within the state. So, we don't want to bring anybody in from, we did have someone from New York, and we onboarded them so that they knew our internal processes, as well as our expectations as a state from our math, with math.
All right, at the end of the day, then, if this individual comes to another school district and is supposed to say not up to par, then the local principal or superintendent have the ability to relieve that individual?
That is correct. And we also have language wherein that if we're not satisfied with the coaching supports as well, that we have the flexibility to ask for a replacement within a specified period of time, to make sure that there's no disruption or interruption to services being provided.
We implemented a similar model back last spring, and it went off without a hiccup. Because of the oversight, what they're not telling you is they have at least one call a week with the district managers and the leadership, and just, the school districts have our direct line as well. If there's a problem, we address it immediately. So, it worked really well because there, we wanted individuals with a deep knowledge of math, pedagogy, I think you said that, and the standards. And so, that is the anchor that I think allows us to have individuals outside of Mississippi.
So, over the course of this four-year contract, and with that a significant amount of money, at what level are we spending on an annual basis?
So, for year one, there is an estimated cost of right at around 1.9 million. For year two, it's right at around three, and then the same thing for year three and year four.
And I'd assume that year two, three, and four, you're bringing in more coaches?
Additional coaches, yes, sir.
And I would assume too that the local district would have the ability to do their own evaluation?
Oh, absolutely. We work, yes, we work very closely, and not only do we meet with them very strategically every week, but Dr. Smith, myself, and also additional staff from the MDE will be doing our own formal and informal observations of the work.
Thank you.
You're most welcome. Thank you for your question.
Out of curiosity, how many vendors, this is an 11-million-dollar program, how many vendors applied?
If it's okay, I'd like to...
It was four.
It was four, I can answer that, Dr. Gavin.
And why was this one better than the others? What made them stand out?
So, without getting into, I guess, I...
You can answer it?
Okay, I just want to make sure. I want to make sure. This is madam procurement behind me, so I can, I want to make sure. So, vendor number two, who came in a little bit under the 11 million dollars, had never done this work at scale at the state level. They had done this work at the district level, but we needed someone who had did a similar scope of work. Vendor number three came in, but their plan of action was not adequate enough to perform services. Vendor number four came in, 7.1 million dollars over budget. In addition to that, their particular, their proposal, again, was not up to par and provided quite a bit of cut and paste, if I can just say that. And so, this particular vendor, as I mentioned, has done this work for 50 years, their plan of action, their, the ability to perform this work immediately and deployment was right in alignment with what the requirements were for this particular work.
I think it was significant that they had a national cadre of coaches already on staff with Catapult, and therefore, were able to come in ready to roll and deploy coaches, even if they had to pull them from their other work areas. They were willing to do that for Mississippi.
I think also a selling point is that international work with DOD, and the fact that you know how those students transfer, move, and this company's ability to keep up with them, even if they move from school district A to school district B, or whatever the case may be, that was what was impressive to me yesterday in making this presentation. It's also, it's state appropriated dollars, right?
That is correct.
We appropriated $5 million for math and professional, math professional learning and math coaching.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Thank you for, go ahead.
$5 million that you've been allocated, is that for how many years?
That's one year, $5 million per year.
So, if you come in under that...
Yes, we will have additional funds for professional learning and additional opportunities.
Can't be that.
Yes, no.
Great job, ladies, thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, we're on item five. This is our first action item, and this is approval of MDE contracts. We have two, 5A and 5B. The 5A is the multi-year contract with Catapult Learning that you just heard about, and then 5B is a renewal with Mythics, Inc. to provide Oracle licensing support. Dr. Gavin?
I think you've just summed it up, Ms. Altman. There's nothing else to say. You've just heard about item 5A, that is the multi-year contract with Catapult for the 10.9 million over the course of those four years. And then, of course, item B is with Mythics, and that is a renewal for our Oracle licensing support.
Are there any questions on these? Any further...
I'd have to ask, in the contract, Dr. Gavin, what kind of annual review would we have, that we could have to maybe sever the contract or have some discussions about the delivery of the systems? Do we have that review in the contract?
We do. We have the standard language in all of our contracts, that number one is subject to appropriation, and number two, we have the convenience to terminate at any point. And as Dr. Davis said, that they will be reviewing the services of the provider.
We'll take both of these contracts in one motion, so do I have a motion to approve items 5A and 5B? Ms. Warner is the second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. East? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you very much. Item six is the consent agenda. We have items A through J. Are there any questions or comments on any of these items? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion that we approve items A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, and J.
I move...
Okay, Mr. Miller?
Second.
We have a second?
Second.
Mr. Jacobs, okay? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? All right, thank you. Our next item is to have a closed determination of the need to go into executive session.
I move the board consider making a closed determination of the need to go into executive session.
Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll ask that you clear the room, please. We'll ask that you clear the room, please. During the executive session, the board just received an update, there was no action taken in that, during that time. Have any of you attended any meetings that you'd like to report on outside of this? Okay, I assume no one is, anybody going out of state to a meeting that you need approval for? All right, well, our February board meeting will be held on February the 16th, 2023, in the Ridge, in Ridgeland, Mississippi, at the Madison County School District Board Room at 476 Highland Colony, that will begin at 10:00 a.m. I will entertain, if there's no other business, anybody else got anything they want to say or report on? Then I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn.
So moved.
All right, a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Anybody want to stay? All right. We are adjourned.